We're going to get started tonight and I think that I've said before, probably one or more than once, is that one of the best ways, I think, to study the Bible is to study the Bible book by book. I think what that does is it enables you to see the whole message at a particular time, given by God to a particular group of people, as I say, at a particular time. But also, when you're able to see those individual messages through each book, or each letter, or each Psalm, even, even the songs in Psalms. What, what happens is you're able then to, to get a bigger understanding of the message of the entire Bible. Because what you start to see when you study book by book is that each book actually has its place in the whole, that the Bible is actually like a jigsaw puzzle. And each book has its place. And without looking at one or two of them, you can't complete the picture. And so it's really, I think, really important that you read the entire Bible, but also that you start to think about studying the entire Bible. What happens with most Christians is that we have books that we like and sections in that book that we like best. And, and then we have books that we, I don't know, it's a bit difficult, I mean, Numbers, Leviticus, Ezekiel, do I really want to look at those books? But actually, what happens is we miss a huge part of this wonderful jigsaw that is God's revelation to us. And so I would, you know, as I say, I think one of the best ways is to study book by book and then to get this whole picture of the whole. And actually, what will happen when you do that is that you will find ways to divide the Bible, to split the Bible. And, and I, I have a way that I like to think about the Bible. Well, I have several ways, obviously, but one of the ways that I can divide the Bible, and that I have done because of the studies, is that I can say that the Bible divides into not Old and New Testament, although of course it does, but two, two things. How does a person get right with God? And the second part is, how does a person live right with God? And I think that the Bible actually divides really easily into those two, two halves. How does a person get right with God? And how does a person live right with God? Now, of course, it's not book by book in that, you'll find both things in most books. And so, but what you find when you, when you think about those two titles, how does a person get right with God? And how does a person live right with God? And what you'll find is that the same answer applies to both question. How does a person get right with God? By faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. How does a person live right with God? By faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. Faith is not just a cerebral experience, it's not just the knowledge of certain facts. It is the giving of yourself to those facts. So first, you have to hear the facts, hear the gospel, the good news of Jesus Christ, and receive those facts for yourself. That is how you get right with God. And the second question, how do I live right with God? Is that I expand my knowledge of the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ, of the whole gospel, the whole counsel of God, and I live accordingly. But I live by faith. I live by faith in what I read and what I know and what the Holy Spirit makes real in my life. So both, the Bible can be split into two parts. How do you get right with God? And how do you live right with God? And both of them, as far as, both of them, as I've just said, are answered by that statement, by faith, by trust, by trusting yourself to the Lord Jesus Christ. That's how you get right with God, and that's how you live right with God. And much of the Old Testament is concerned with how the people of God, Israel, became the people of God. So how do they get right with God? And then, how do they live right with God? And when you think about that, you know, for me, I know that God calls us sheep. It's the, it's the single most repeated description of believers, be they Old Testament or New Testament, in scripture. He likens us to sheep. In John chapter 10, remember, Jesus says, "I am the good shepherd; my sheep know my voice." And actually, one time, I did a study on sheep. It was part of, actually, a study on John's Gospel. And when you learn about sheep, you will be surprised and kind of a little bit humbled by the fact that God calls you a sheep. Because sheep are very, very dependent animals. Sheep need a shepherd. Sheep will eat themselves off a cliff. Sheep cannot get rid of the bugs that attack their nose and their ears. Sheep, if they fall down, can very seldom get up. Pregnant sheep who fall into a ditch are, it is impossible for them to get themselves back up on their feet. Sheep, and so many different things about sheep, but sheep are very, are animals who are completely dependent on the shepherd. They need the shepherd to keep them safe at night from wolves and other animals. They need a shepherd to guide them to good pasture, because they'll just eat anything, anywhere. They need a shepherd to corral them in and to keep them in and guide them and lead them. And that is why God likens us to sheep, because without God, we are unable to navigate successfully this life. And so that's why I like to simplify things in scripture, because I believe God's definition of me. I believe His description of me, that I'm a sheep. I know that I need a shepherd. I know that I'm going to go wrong if I am left on my own. I know that without God, without His Holy Spirit leading me and directing me and guiding me, then I'm going to make a million wrong decisions. I'm going to keep on making wrong decisions. And I'm not going to know how to change those and get out of those, making those wrong decisions, because I don't have the wherewithal, in and of myself, to be anything other than a sheep. And so that's why I like simplicity. That's why I like being able to ask simple questions, who, what, where, when, why, and how. That's why I like being able to divide the Bible into two very easy things to remember. How do I get right with God? How do I get right with God? And how do I live right with God? And so, as you read the Old Testament, as I say, you start, you, you, when you're reading the Old Testament, what you're reading is how the people of Israel became the people of God, and how God showed them how to live with Him. And actually, that's the whole of it. That's the whole of the Old Testament. And you start to see that when you read the books of the Old Testament. And, and, and when you start from the understanding that God wants us to know Him, and therefore, He made Himself known. And so, yeah, as I say, what we start, when we start in Genesis, with Genesis chapter one, what will happen in Genesis is that the first line is, "In the beginning, God." "In the beginning, God," it's almost like a stage production. God walks onto the stage and He says, He's the author of the play. And He's, and He doesn't tell you where He came from, or, or what He was doing before He did this. He just walks onto the stage and He introduces Himself. "Here I am, I am the author, I am God, I am the sovereign." And then He starts to describe what He has done to make it possible for people to get right with Him and to live right with Him. And He starts from the beginning. "In the beginning, God created." And we, we see straight away, God created. He created all things. And then we go through Genesis and on into the rest of the Old Testament, and on into the New Testament. And we are constantly given more and more information about this God, so that if we don't know Him, we start to know Him better and we, and we learn how to get right with Him. And then if we do know Him already, we know how to live with Him. And I love that about God. I love that He's so simple. I love that He speaks simply and clearly. And I love that I can see that in the scripture. So what we see in Genesis, I think I said last week, think simply when you're coming to study scripture. Think simply. You know, I'm sure that there are many people listening who are deep and philosophical thinkers, and that's wonderful. That is really wonderful. But when you're trying to think about God and you, think simply. Just think about, what has God told me about Himself? What is it? God could have told us anything. There are things that we will not know until we see Him face to face. There are mysteries and majestic situations and wonders that we will never know until we get to see Him. But He has chosen to reveal certain things to us. And He has chosen what we need to know to have life, to have life here on this planet, life that will take us from here into a glorious eternity with Him. I said last time, Genesis is fifty chapters long. And, and thirty-nine of those chapters are about the people of Israel. So you've got, my maths is hopeless, isn't it? Eleven chapters, eleven chapters about God creating the world and about what happened up just after the creation. And then you get to chapter twelve of Genesis, and it begins God's dealings with His people. And when you read Genesis twelve and then on into Genesis, what you see is that God called a man called Abraham, and He made a nation out of him. It was all of God, it was all of God. He called Abraham in Genesis twelve, verse one to three. Let's read those verses just quickly. "Now the Lord said to Abram, 'Go forth from your country and from your relatives and from your father's house to the land which I will show you. And I will make you a great nation, and I will bless you and make your name great, and so you shall be a blessing. And I will bless those who bless you, and the one who curses you, I will curse. And in you all the families of the earth will be blessed.'" This is God speaking to a man called Abram at the time. God will later change His name to Abraham. But here, he's, he's called Abram. And God comes to him and says, "I want you to leave your country and go to a place I'm going to show you. I'm going to make a great nation out of you, and I'm going to bless you." And on through those, those three verses. And Abraham goes. He believes God, he listens to God, and he obeys God, and he goes. And what we're shown in the next chapters is that God's promise to Abraham, He is, God sees through His promise to Abraham, takes him to the land that he was, he is, he was wanting him to go to. And He is going to give Abraham a son called Isaac. And then God is going to come to Isaac, and He's going to reinforce the promise, the covenant that He makes with, that He made with Abraham. He's going to re-establish it with Isaac. And then Isaac is going to have two sons. And one of those sons, Jacob, is going to be the way in which God runs His people through the, the line, the genealogy line into what becomes the nation of Israel. And so God makes this covenant with Abraham, which He establishes with Isaac, and then is sustained and, and promoted and, and whatever the word fulfilled in Jacob and in his twelve sons. And, and all of the Old Testament is about how that people of God live with God. It's how they do well sometimes and they do very badly at other times. It's how God keeps sending prophets to them to tell them to come back to Him, to, to stop disobeying and obey. The whole of the Old Testament is about that. It's about how God deals with His people, how He wants them to live with Him, how He wants them to know Him, how He wants them to be able to worship Him and serve Him and love Him. And, and the, the whole of the Old Testament is about that. And, and so the New Testament, when you come into the New Testament, what you find in the New Testament, right at the beginning, is those four gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, which are kind of neither in the Old Testament or quite in the New, really. Because the New Testament is actually the new covenant. So you've got the covenant that God made with Abraham, and then you have a covenant, which had other covenants that came out of it. Then you have the covenant that God made, the new covenant, that He made through the death and the burial and the resurrection of Jesus Christ, His Son. So in, in the New Testament, those four gospel books actually are the bridge from the old to the new. And, and when you think about it, Jesus, who is described in those four books, is the bridge between us and God. And so what we have is, we have the Old Testament, the way that God made a nation, and the way that He made it possible for them to live with Him. And then you come into the gospels, and here you have God revealing Himself as a human being in the form of His Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. And John's Gospel tells you that, that "in the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. And the Word took on flesh and dwelt among us, and we beheld His glory." So what you see is, Old Testament, God making a people and showing them how to live with Him. And then those four gospels, God actually coming to earth to reveal Himself to His people, Israel, in, and wanting them to put their trust in Him completely. And then, as we go on into the New Testament, what you see is that the Jews, by and large, did not put their trust in the Messiah, in, in the Lord Jesus Christ. And so the gospel went out to Gentiles, to people like you and I. And we talked about that last week, when we looked at Ephesians. We talked about the fact that you and I, as Gentiles, before Christ had no hope. There was no way for us to get to God, except to become a Jew. Because Jew, God had decided that He would make Himself a people and show those people how to live, so that you and I could live, so that everybody who wanted to know God could live right with Him. I mean, this is such a condensed version, and I'm sorry to be so quick. And, and this is really only the introduction. But what I want us to understand is that God has been revealing Himself from the beginning, and He has done it in a very straightforward way. Because He knows that people like us, sheep, need it to be very straightforward. Now, I don't want to offend you by that. I don't, if, if you're very intelligent and, and very academic, and you have a philosophical bent, and if you're a really deep thinker, that's all wonderful. But, but God still describes you as a sheep. And so what He wants us to understand is the basic bottom line of how to study. You understand that God wants you to know Him, and so He has made it simple for you to know Him. And if you study the Bible, if you read the Bible book by book by book, and if you just look for those two things, how did a person get right with God? And how did a person live right with God? You'll find the answer to, to most of the questions that you might have about who God is, about how He works, about what He does, and about how you are supposed to live now. So the Bible is basically a book about how God reveals Himself to mankind. It's about how He tells people who He is, and about how He tells people how, how we live with a holy, holy, holy God. How do we live with this God? And, but even saying all of that, and, and in that, as I say, kind of very quick synopsis, the biggest thing, or one of the bigger, one of the other biggest things to understand is that the Bible is a book about God. It's not about you, it's not about me. The Bible is a book about God. It is God's revelation of Himself to the human race. It is what God wanted to tell us about Himself. And, 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 and to, to come to the Bible, wanting to, to know what's in it for you is kind of entirely the wrong focus. Because the whole Bible focuses on who God is, who He is. And when you have that perspective and that focus, what happens is, God becomes huge in your thinking, and you become smaller. And even though sometimes that doesn't sound like a good thing, it ends up being the very best thing. Because the bigger God is, the smaller your problems. The bigger He is, the more glorious He is, the more majestic He is, the more wonderful He is. And the more that you realize that to be His child is the best, best thing that could ever have happened to you. So when you come to the Bible, I think I said last time, always, when you ask those questions of the texts, when you're studying any part of the Bible, always look for the times when God is mentioned, when God reveals Himself in another way, when He gives you a different name to describe Him, when He, when He tells you, you know, that He's holy, that He's loving, that He's just, that He's compassionate, that He's merciful, that He's full of grace. Write those things down, because ultimately, you are changed by those things. But the greatest joy will be for you when you start to realize that you are getting to know God, and He is fantastic. And that will give you such joy and drive you to want to know Him more, that Bible study won't become an exercise or a duty or something that you feel you should do, but you don't really want to do. It will become the joy of your life. It will become, well, one of the joys of your life. It will become the way that you get to know the God who created you, who called you, who will love you for eternity, and who will never let you go. I said in session one, and I know I've said that loads of times, that God wants you to know Him in relationship and because He knows that when you come into that relationship, everything about your life will start to change. Everything will start to become clear, and you'll live in a different dimension. I mean, that's, that's the truth. When you come into that relationship and when you start to work and develop that relationship, everything about your life will begin to change. And you will start to use, as I've called, said before, the eyes of your faith, instead of your human eyes. Because you will start to learn, because you learn about God, you will start to learn about how He wants you to live with Him. And when you start living with Him the way He wants you to live with Him, by the power of His Spirit, you will start to receive the blessings of a child of God. And that will begin to take root deep in your soul and will change every part of your life. And it will change the way that you view the world. It will change the way that you view all the situations that are, that are in our world today. So as we finish then, this is the last session, and now really, this is a serious, serious question. And I know that you're here because you want to know how to study. And, and so I think, even just because of that, I suppose I, I know the answer. I hope that the answer to my question is, is an automatic answer. But, but the question is, do you want to know God and His Son, the Lord Jesus Christ? Remember in John seventeen, verse three, Jesus is just about to pray for His disciples? And, and what He says in verse three of chapter seventeen is, "And this is eternal life, that they might know you, the one true God, and Jesus Christ whom you have sent." So ask yourself the question, do you really want to know God? And, and do you want to know how to live right with Him? You know, because knowing God's characteristics, knowing about God is one thing, but entering into a relationship with God whereby you are changed by your understanding of His character, where you're asking Him to change you so that you become more like Him, that's another level. That's a different relationship. That brings you into a, a, a living, working relationship with God. Do you really want that relationship? Because it's very easy to get distracted and to forget that God wants to know you. So I suppose I'm asking the question because I think you need to make a choice. You need to make a choice. And as I said, I'm sure that many of you have already made that choice, and that's why you're here. You need to make a choice. Will I make, knowing God, knowing Jesus, the most important thing in my life? Will I make time to know God and to know His Son? Will I choose time to study over all the other things that I enjoy doing? Will I literally commit myself to the pursuit of God? You know, that's what, that's what a life of following Christ is. It's a commitment to pursue God, to, to run after Him in the way that He's revealed to us. You know, God has written sixty-six books, and He wants us to read them and know Him through them and enter into that relationship. And it's a living word. Those words on the page are alive, and they will have effect in your life. They will change your character and change your personality. They will change your views on everything around you. They will change you and mold you and shape you into the image of the Lord Jesus Christ. But you have to choose that. You have to choose it. So tonight, at the end of tonight, make that choice. Make that choice. And write it in a journal, or on the top of a page in your notebook, or on your mirror or something. Make a note of the date that you made that choice, and that come what may, no matter how difficult it was, no matter how many times you thought, oh, I just haven't got time for this, that you would commit yourself to learning of God, learning about God, learning with God about who He is, and, and committing yourself to knowing, knowing Him and knowing how to live with Him. So all that being said, we're into the last session, as I said. And when you study a book at a time, you will be able to ask the, the questions, who, what, where, when, why, and how. And as you ask those questions, you will understand what was going on at the time the book was written, what was, what was going on in the time of the book. You'll know when that was in history, because you'll be able to date it in, in different ways. You will know who the main, main characters are, and what are the circumstances that they find themselves in. And, and to help in the understanding of all of that, because that is what's going to give you the context of everything you read, to help in your understanding of that, you kind of look at, well, how much space is given to a particular thing in this book? Now, we did Ephesians for a couple of weeks, didn't we? And we looked at the letter to the Ephesians. And I, I think I said that Ephesians divides, it's six chapters, and it divides three and three. So the first three chapters of Ephesians are all about what God has done. It's, it, the whole three chapters are about what God has done in Christ Jesus. And the last three chapters are about what you and I do as believers in the Lord Jesus. So can you see what I mean about when I started, how do I get right with God? Well, He's done all of this, and I believe in the Lord Jesus, by faith. And then, how do I live right with God? Well, I do all of this by faith in the Lord Jesus. And so, and, and what happens when you start to look at a book about, well, how much time is spent on this? And how much time is spent on that? You start to see how this book is, and what are the main focuses, and what the themes are in the book. And as I said, in Genesis, when you look at Genesis, it's easy to see, fifty chapters, thirty-nine of them about Israel. And so Genesis, the word Genesis is actually beginnings. It means beginnings. So had you looked up that word, you would see that, that the, the whole book is, is about beginnings. And so you'd look at that, okay, it's the beginning of the human race, or it's the beginning of the, of the universe, actually. And then it's the beginning of the human race, and then it's the beginning of this, and the beginning of that. And then thirty-nine chapters of the beginning of Israel. And so it's, it's not difficult to see that the main focus of the book of Genesis is the making of a nation called Israel, how God made the nation. And so as, as, you know, as you go through it, you find that, that you start to understand what the context is of, of the book of Genesis. What am I supposed to be learning from the book of Genesis? So, because it's fifty chapters long, and there's a lot of stuff in it. And so you need a way to break it up, so that you can look at it and say, okay, what's important here? What's the theme? What's the main focus? You know, I'll come back to the details later, but I want to know what the main part, the main... You know, I'll come back to the details later, but I want to know what the main part, the main point of this book is. And as you ask these questions, and as you look for the answers to some of the questions, you start to see what God wants you to concentrate on. What does he want you to concentrate on in Genesis? He wants you to concentrate on the fact that he made a nation, and he called it Israel. What does he want you to concentrate on in the whole of the, the thirty-nine, thirty-nine books of the Old Testament? What does he want you to concentrate on those? There are sixty-six books in the Bible, thirty-nine of them in the Old Testament. So what does he want you to concentrate on? He wants you to concentrate on Israel. The Old Testament focus is Israel. It's what God did to make a people called Israel. And the New Testament, from verse, twenty-six chapters of the New Testament. I don't know if that adds up, doesn't that add up, does it anyway? You know, do the math, work out the books. But the twenty-six books of the, of the New Testament, what are they about? They are about people who put their trust in the Lord Jesus Christ, God in the flesh. They are about the church, by and large. They are about the church. What's the main theme of the New Testament? It's the church. What's the main theme of the Old Testament? It's Israel. What's the main theme of the Bible? How do you become part of the people of God? And then how do you live when you are a part of the people of God? So, as you read through, and as you ask these questions, and as you try to keep things simple and divide it up in the way that I've said, and, and there's a lot, you know, I know that I've said a lot in this first, however long this has been, forty-five minutes, I've said a lot of stuff. And, and I'm sorry if the, if it's, I don't know, I'm sorry if there's too much in there, and I haven't gone slow enough, and I haven't given you more pointers to it. But really, what I'm saying is, come to the Bible with a very, with an understanding of the fact that God will make it simple for you. He will make it simple for you. And, and don't concern yourself so much with the details, the details of every verse when you come to a, a book. Begin by looking at the overall. Begin by looking at how many chapters is devoted to this? How many chapters are devoted? What type of book is this? Is this a history book? Is this a prophecy? Is this a song? Is it, is it a set of sayings, proverbs? You know, what type of book is this? And then start to understand, okay, is this, this is a historical narrative. So what am I going to expect to find in here? Oh, I'm going to expect to find dates and names of people, and, and what happened when? And who did what to whom? And so in that way, you will start to gain an understanding, not simply of what happens in the scripture, but of who God is through it. And what you will see in the Old Testament, as you read the Old Testament, is God's faithfulness to his people. You will see that God is a covenant-making, covenant-keeping God, that he makes promises and he always fulfills his promises, that he never breaks a promise. That though his people walk away from him, he never walks away from them. And you will start to gain an understanding, not just of the people of Israel, which the main focus of the Old Testament is, but you will start to gain an understanding of who God is. That he could choose this people and bless them with so many things, and yet they could reject him over and over and over again, yet he would never, ever turn away from them and leave them. It builds up a picture of who God is. And as I said earlier, you are, we are the beneficiaries of knowing who he is. You don't see it all at once, of course not. It, you don't. I, I mean, when you first started the Bible, you just see the words in front of you, and, and it's kind of, it's like a mass. But, but remembering that God wants you to know him, you pray and you ask him to show you what it is he wants you to understand from this book. What do you want me to understand from this book? You know, I, I always remember studying Job and not wanting to really, because who wants to study Job? It's a listening of disaster from beginning to end. And, and, and as you study it, it's hard to, it's hard to make your way through it, because there's different people talking and different things happening, and it's really hard. But one of the things that really helped me was, was to read the beginning and the end, and to see actually what happened. And what happens in the book of Job is that Job suffers. He suffers terribly, but he never gives up on his faith. He always continues in his faith. And so what you come to at the end is that when you come to God with your questions about suffering, and why does he allow suffering, and what is going on with this, and what is going on with that? You can have all sorts of good answers based on what you know about God. But one of the things that you see clearly in suff, in, in, when you have a question about suffering is, God will say to you, "Look at my servant Job." You want to know about suffering? Look at Job. Here is a man who said, "It is still my consolation, and I rejoice in unsparing pain that I have not denied the words of the Holy One." You want to know about suffering? "I am the God who is above all of that. If you keep your eyes on me, you will get through this time of suffering. You will get through it, holding on to your faith. You will get through it with millions of questions, millions of things you want to say to God, because it's not fair, and you've lived the right life, and, and, and why are you suffering this?" And at the end, at the end of Job's life, he saw God. He saw God, and, and sorry, not at the end of his life, at the end of the story of his, the account of his suffering. What you hear Job say is, "I had heard of you with the hearing of the ear, but now my eyes have seen you, and I repent in dust and ashes." Because what God showed him about himself was so wonderful, that God could only repent for the fact that he had questioned and claimed his own righteousness so much through his, through his suffering. So anyway, I'm sorry, all of that to say, that's not in my notes, and I don't know why I've digressed, but all of that to say, that what happens when you study these books is that you start to get a picture of who God is, and you start to see how people related to God, and how God dealt with those people. And it starts to impact the way that you think about God and that you think about yourself. So, tonight, we've only got time for one chapter, as always. The time goes really fast. And it's, I gave, I put something in the homework for you to look at, and that was Second Chronicles, chapter thirty-four. And so we're going to discuss Second Chronicles thirty-four. And so we're going to read it first. I'll read the first nineteen verses of Second Chronicles, chapter thirty-four. I gave you some information in the homework about Chronicles and about kings, because there's a cross, cross-reference to Second Chronicles thirty-four in Second Kings twenty-two. And, and I gave you some information about that, so I won't repeat it now. But let's just read Second Chronicles thirty-four, verse one to nineteen. "Josiah was eight years old when he became king, and he reigned thirty-one years in Jerusalem. He did right in the sight of the Lord, and walked in the ways of his father David, and did not turn aside to the right or to the left. For in the eighth year of his reign, while he was still a youth, he began to seek the God of his father David; and in the twelfth year, he began to purge Judah and Jerusalem of the high places, the Asherim, the carved images, and the molten images. They tore down the altars of the bales in his presence, and the incense altars that were high above them he chocked down. Also the Asherim, the carved images, and the molten images he broke in pieces, and ground to powder, and scattered it on the graves of those who had sacrificed to them. Then he burned the bones of the priests on their altars, and purged Judah and Jerusalem. In the cities of Manasseh, Ephraim, Simeon, even as far as Naftali, in their surrounding ruins, he also tore down the altars and beat the Asherim and the carved images into powder, and chopped down all the incense altars throughout the land of Israel. Then he returned to Jerusalem. Now in the eighteenth year of his reign, when he had purged the land and the house, he sent Shaphan, the son of Veliya, and Messiah, an official of the city, and Joah, the son of Johaz, the recorder, to repair the house of the Lord his God. They came to Hilkiah, the high priest, and delivered the money that was brought into the house of God, which the Levites, the doorkeepers, had collected from Manasseh and Ephraim, and from all the remnant of Israel, and from all Judah and Benjamin, and the inhabitants of Jerusalem. Then they gave it into the hands of the workmen, who had the oversight of the house of the Lord; and the workmen who were working in the house of the Lord used it to restore and repair the house. They in turn gave it to the carpenters and to the builders, to buy quarried stone and timber for couplings, and to make beams for the houses, which the kings of Judah had let go to ruin. The men did the work faithfully, with foremen over them to supervise; Jeha, and Obadiah, the Levites, of the sons of Morari, Zechariah, and Meshullam, of the sons of Coethites, and the Levites, all who were skilled with musical instruments. They were also over the burden-bearers, and supervised all the workmen from job to job; and some of the Levites were scribes, and officials, and gatekeepers. When they were bringing out the money which had been brought into the house of the Lord, Hilkiah, the priest, found the book of the law of the Lord, given by Moses. Hilkiah responded, and said to Shaphan the scribe, "I have found the book of the law in the house of the Lord." And Hilkiah gave the book to Shaphan. Then Shaphan brought the book to the king, and reported further word to the king, saying, "Everything that was entrusted to your servants, they are doing. They have also emptied out the money which was found in the house of the Lord, and have delivered it into the hands of the supervisors and the workmen." Moreover, Shaphan the scribe told the king, saying, "Hilkiah the priest gave me a book; and Shaphan read from it in the presence of the king. When the king heard the words of the Lord, he tore his clothes." I think I said in the homework to ask some questions of the text and, yeah, and to look at the response of the priest, Hilkiah, and the pre, and the response of Josiah. So just before we take a break, you know, maybe in, in the small groups that you're in, you might want to, to chat about some of the things that you found in the homework. I don't know if you did the homework, but if you did, you might want to talk about it. And again, as I say, I'm going to make the breakout rooms in a couple of minutes, and I don't want you to feel obliged to be a part of it. But if you would like to, I really think it would be good. So ask yourself, if you haven't done the homework, that's okay. Think about what we, what I've just read. Who is this chapter about? It's about Josiah. Where is he? Well, he's in Jerusalem. We read that right at the beginning. How is he described? And he's described as, "He did right in the sight of the Lord, and walked in the ways of his father David, and did not turn aside to the right or the left." What had been going on just before he came to the throne? And to, to, to know that, you'd have to go back to chapter thirty-three and read the last few verses. So from verse twenty-one to verse twenty-five. And what you would find is that Josiah's father and his grandfather are both described as evil kings who didn't walk in the ways of the Lord. They worshipped idols. But in verse two here of chapter thirty-four, we read that David is the father of Josiah. So we, we would have to look up what that word "father" means. And what we would find is that actually it means ancestor. David was an ancestor of Josiah, because it was David's line through whom all the kings came. And so David was an ancestor of Josiah, and Josiah walked in the ways of David. And when you look up who David is, you see that he is described in scripture as a man after God's own heart. And so, that's First Samuel thirteen, verse fourteen. As you start to build a picture of Josiah, of, of who he is, I think I asked in the homework, how old is he when he takes the throne? How old is he when he instructs people to tear down the idols? How old is he when he starts to repair the temple? These things are all important. They're all questions that we, we can be asking of the text to build a picture of what this chapter is about. Because Josiah is just one of the kings mentioned in the book of First and Second Chronicles. He is a king in the line of David, a king of Judah. And he had a father and a grandfather who did evil in the sight of the Lord, who worshipped other gods. And yet here we have Josiah, who takes the throne at eight years old, and sets his heart to follow God. So I'm going to just pray very quickly, and then just set up the backup breakout rooms, as I say. Please make the best of them if you can, and I will come back in about ten minutes and bring everybody back together again, hopefully. So Father, thank you. I pray for what I've said, Lord, to have meaning and, and some purpose in, in all of our lives. So I pray that we would hear your voice through it all. And I pray now, as we go into these breakout rooms, that we would make, make the most of them, Lord, and chat to one another, either about this particular chapter, Second Chronicles thirty-four, or about anything, Lord. But we would just get to know each other a little bit and fellowship one with the other, in Jesus' name, amen. So, Father, thank you that we could share a little bit together, Lord. I don't, I wasn't there in any of those meetings, so I don't know what was shared and what wasn't. But you know, Lord, and you know, I, we, you know our hearts, you know what we find easy and what we find difficult. You know when we're uncomfortable, or when we're fine about things. And, and, and you, you've promised, Lord God, that you will show us the way through all of the situations of our lives, and that you will enable us to find your path in it. And so I do hope, Lord, that, I, I, I trust you, Father, rather, but not hope. I trust you, Lord, that you will have gone before us in this, and, and that it would have been a good experience. And I pray, Lord, that as we go forward, and as we try to do this more often, that you would help us in it. And now, Lord, as we come back into the last, or the last part of this last session, that you would help me to be clear, Lord, and help each one of us to understand what it is you would have us know, so that we would be changed by it, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen. So, Second Chronicles thirty-four. I think I said to you, I began by reading those nineteen verses and asking the question, who's the chapter about? Well, it's about King Josiah. Where is he? He's in Jerusalem, which is the capital of Judah. It's a long, too long to go into how Judah and Israel became separated. But, and so we want to talk about that here. But how is, is King Josiah described? He's described as a king who does right in the sight of the Lord. And his grandfather and his father, Manasseh and Ammon, both do evil in the sight of the Lord. Chapter thirty-three, verse twenty-one to twenty-five, sum that up for us, that they, they don't walk in the ways of God, and they, they do evil in his sight, and they worship idols. And so Josiah, when he comes to the throne at eight years old, he, it says, "For in the eighth, verse three of chapter thirty-four, "for in the eighth year of his reign, while he was still a youth, he began to seek the God of his father David. He began to seek the God of David, King David, who was the first king, the king of Israel, the one whom God made a covenant with." Actually Saul was king before him, but the, the, but the king by covenant of Israel, David. And David was a man after God's own heart. He's described that way in First Samuel thirteen, verse four. And if we had time, and if you were doing a study of Chronicles, or even just of this chapter of Chronicles, a study of Josiah, let's say, it would be worthwhile looking up First Samuel thirteen, verse fourteen, sorry, not verse four, and seeing, why did God call David that? Why was he called a man after God's own heart? What, what, what did he do? How did he live that made him a man after God's own heart? And, and, but for now, because we, we don't have a lot of time, or we're just going to look at this chapter, we're going to continue with Josiah. And, and he was eight years old when he took the throne. It says that, "In the twelfth year, he began to purge Judah of all the high places", that's the idol-worshipping places that they did, "of the carved images and the Asherim", which were poles for worship, "and molten images; and they tore down the altars of the bales in his presence." And basically, you see that he set about cleansing the nation of Judah and of Israel, actually, the remnant of Israel. You read about the remnant there in, as you go down through that chapter. The people of Ephraim and Manasseh and Naftali, they're all mentioned. He starts to cleanse the entire land of the idols that the Israelites were worshiping. And he, and whilst he's doing that, he sets them about repairing the house of the Lord, the temple of the Lord, the temple that Solomon built, actually, that has obviously come into complete disrepair. And so he starts to instruct them to do that. And what, what do they find when they're doing it? You see, what we're told about Josiah is, he came to the throne very young, eight years old. And, 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 you know, in the twelfth year of his reign, he began to seek God, and in the twelfth year, And in the twelfth year, he began to purge Judah. So now what is he? Is he twenty? So, and then, um, and he started to get them to repair the temple. He's a young man, a young king, and yet he set his heart to seek after the Lord. So I know that there are people here with children, young children, you know, um, I don't know, anything up to what, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you have children. And these children are old enough to seek the Lord. They're old enough to be taken into the word of God for themselves, to be shown how to study. And this method that we're looking at, the, the simply, the simple way of asking questions, they can do, children can do this because it's natural. Who's this about? Oh, it's about Josiah. Oh, and Josiah was only eight and he became king. And look at what it said about him. He set his, he began to seek the Lord, uh, seek the God of his father. He began to seek after God. And so what you can do when you're teaching your children, this method, is that you can start to get them, find their way to get into the scriptures and hear God for themselves. And so, um, we read that about him and we read that when he, uh, set them to, uh, rebuilding and restoring the temple, they find a book, uh, it's called the Book of the Law, and at that time it was their Bible. They found the Book of the Law and they handed it to Hilkiah, who happened to be the priest at that time. Um, if we go to, um, verse fourteen of Second Chronicles thirty-four. When they were bringing out the money which had been brought into the house of the Lord, Hilkiah the priest found the book of the law of the Lord given by Moses. Hilkiah responded and said to Shaphan the scribe, I have found the book of the law in the house of the Lord. And he gave the book to Shaphan. And then Shaphan brought the book to the king. Now this exchange is really interesting, isn't it? So what questions would we ask? Okay, how did Hilkiah the priest respond to finding the Book of the Law? And the answer is he, he gave it to the scribe, Shaphan. And how did Shaphan respond to finding the Book of the Law? Well, he took it to the king and showed it to the king. And how did Josiah respond to finding the Book of the Law? And, and you see a completely different response. Look at verse nineteen, when the king heard the words of the law, he tore his clothes. Um, and then the king commanded Hilkiah, Ahikam, the son of Shaphan, Aban, the son of Micah, Shaphan the scribe, and Asiah, the king's servant, saying, go inquire of the Lord for me and for those who are left in Israel and Judah concerning the words of the book which has been found. For great is the wrath of the Lord which is poured out on us because our fathers have not observed the word of the Lord to do according to all that is written in this book. So you have a completely different response from the king than you have had from anyone else who has seen this book, who has found this book lying, you know, beneath the rubble, it seems, in the midst of a disused and broken down temple. And, you know, what we're seeing here, uh, when we're, uh, reading this, is that Josiah was bothered because the word of the Lord had been lost in the house of God. Not only have the temple itself been, uh, laid to, in, into rubble and gone into disrepair, but the word of the Lord, the actual word of God, had been hidden amongst the rubble and not seen and not been read and not been, uh, uh, not been adhered to. And, and when Josiah hears, when that book is read to him and he hears what God says in the book, he tears his clothes. He tears his clothes, which is, um, um, you know, a, a sign of remorse and contrition and repentance, and he sent to inquire of the Lord. Because when he read the words of the book, um, he, he was distraught because his, his, he knew that his father, his grandfather, and many kings before him had not done what God had told them to do. And, and so just before we go on any more with that, think about that. Can you make an application from what you hear about Josiah to yourself? You know, is there a spiritual principle that you can take from the life of Josiah and apply to yourself? And I mean, you know, there's an obvious one right at the beginning, you know, that it is possible to leave behind the sin and the wrong ways and the wrong lifestyle of your parents or your family or your ancestors. It is possible to turn away from that and seek after God. It is possible to live differently to your family, to your friends, and to the society that you, that you live in. It's possible to do that, to seek after God. And, and can you see that every individual person has choices to make for themselves? You're not caught in a trap that you can't get out of. God will enable you to get out of any trap that you find yourself in because of your family, because of your friends, because of the society around you. God is greater than any of your past. He is greater than any of the things you are caught up in now in the presence, and he is greater than anything that might come against you in the future. He is bigger than it all and he will enable you, if you set your heart to seek him, he will enable you to find him. And Josiah set his heart to seek after God, right at the beginning of the chapter, we hear that. And we see this man of God, actually, this king of Judah, the king of Israel, we see how that has played out in his life. He sought after the God of his father David and David's God became his God. And he then started to tear down the idols and the, and the different ways of worship. And that's what happens to people who seek after God. And so the application, can you see how step by step by step, he made choices for God? He made choices that took him closer to God. And you and I can do that too. You know, we don't know everything when we seek after God. And in fact, when we're turning to God in the first place, we're turning to someone else's God because we don't know him yet. But you, you can be sure, every example in scripture, every single example, just like Josiah, if you want God, he wants you more. If you want to know him, he wants you to know him more. If you love God, he loves you more. That's the whole picture of God in the Bible and it is repeated and repeated and repeated. Josiah took steps to go after God, to pursue God. He turned away from his family line. He turned away from his family. He turned away from the sins of his father and the sins of his grandfather. He had the, uh, he could have gone their way. He was the king. He could have just followed after his, his, his father and his grandfather, but he chose to seek after God. And, you know, that's really, um, I, I think that's a big challenge for us because, you know, we, we are, there are, um, things in our families that are, uh, perhaps, you know, I mean, you have alcoholism, you've got drug abuse, you've got all sorts of physical things that, um, addictions that, that, that you're prone, you're in, in the presence of, shall we say, if you grow up in a family, if you grow up in a family of alcoholics, then you are more likely to be an alcoholic. That's, that's just proven fact. But it is not impossible for you to live without drink. That's what God says. It's not impossible. Make a choice for God and he will make it possible for you to seek after him and to find him and to live a completely different life than the, the, the life that your family lives. So that's one application, one tiny application. It's possible to leave behind the ways of your family, the lifestyles of your family, even your own lifestyle that you had before you knew God. It is possible to leave that behind, to turn away from it and to live a completely different life if you seek after God. Why? Because he is greater than any of the circumstances, any of the family connections in your life. He is bigger and greater and more powerful. And, I mean, it's easy, as you go through this chapter, it's easy to see King Josiah's reaction to the word of God. He immediately understands the seriousness of it. The book has been lost in the house of God and he wants to know how to proceed. What should he do? And so he, uh, he, he sends someone to inquire of the Lord. But just before we get there, what did he read that made him tear his clothes and enabled him to say, um, inquire of the Lord for me and for those who are left in Israel and Judah concerning the words of the book which has been found. For great is the wrath of the Lord which is poured out on us because our fathers have not observed the word of the Lord to do according to all that is written in the book. So almost certainly, uh, what, uh, Josiah had read or what had been read to him was the, uh, Book of Deuteronomy. The Book of Deuteronomy is written by Moses just before the Israelites go into the Promised Land. They're right on the edge. They've been in the wilderness for forty years. They get to the edge of the Promised Land and just before, under Joshua, they go in and take Jericho and then the rest of the Promised Land. Uh, Moses, God, through Moses, reiterates how they are to live when they get into the land, how they are to live with God when they get into the land. And one of the things that God says to them in Deuteronomy is, when you get into the land and you live in cities that you did not build and you reap crops that you did not sow, then watch yourself, that you do not forget that I am the Lord who gave you these things. You know, what God is saying to them all the way through Deuteronomy is a reiteration of what he has been saying to them since he took them out of Egypt forty years before. And finally, he's saying, don't forget, when you get into the land, when you are blessed, when you are reaping crops you didn't sow, when you're living in houses you didn't build, don't forget that I am the God who brought you here. And of course, um, when you read the history of Israel, you find out, of course, they very often forgot. And, uh, and particularly, I think, particularly in the Book of Deuteronomy, um, what you find in there is an instruction to the kings that will be kings of Israel later on. When Moses is saying this, they haven't even got an idea of a king. They're gonna have a few hundred years of judges, not kings. So, uh, this is before any king ever came to the throne. God will say something through Moses to them, to tell them about the kings that come. And Deuteronomy seventeen tells you what God laid out for these kings to do. So, Deuteronomy seventeen, if you can, go there, verse fourteen. When you enter the land which the Lord gives you and you possess it and live in it, and you say, I will set a king over me like all the nations who are around me, you shall surely set a king over you whom the Lord your God chooses. One from among your countrymen you shall set as king over yourselves. You may not put a foreigner over yourselves who is not your countryman. Moreover, he shall not multiply horses for himself, nor shall he cause his people to return to Egypt to multiply horses, since the Lord has said to you, you shall never again return that way. He shall not multiply wives for himself, or else his heart will turn away, nor shall he greatly increase silver and gold for himself. Now it shall come about, when he sits on the throne of his kingdom, he shall write for himself a copy of this law on a scroll in the presence of the Levitical priests. It shall be with him and he shall read it all the days of his life, that he may learn to fear the Lord his God by carefully observing all the words of this law and these statutes, that his heart may not be lifted up above his countrymen, and that he may not turn aside from the commandment to the right or to the left, so that he and his sons may continue long in his kingdom in the midst of Israel. So can you see, this is what Josiah almost certainly read. He read Deuteronomy, or it was read to him, and he understood, not only did he, this, had this book lain under the rubble in a disused temple, but he hadn't read these words of the Lord himself every day. He hadn't done that. And he, and because, and nor had his father and his grandfather. They hadn't been doing that. And because they hadn't been doing it, um, they had done a whole load of things that they shouldn't have done, that God had specifically told them not to do. They had multiplied horses for themselves. Horses were a sign of wealth and, and might. So they had done that. They had had many wives. So what they had done is they had turned away from the direct instruction of God. When you get into the land, this is how you will live and this is what the king will do. He shall read it all the days of his life, that he may learn to fear the Lord his God by carefully observing all the words of this law and these statutes. And what else would happen? That his heart would not be lifted up above his countrymen, that he would remember that he too worships God, that he is king, but, but that with the king, just being king did not give him a superiority over his own countrymen. It, it, so much of that, um, Book of Deuteronomy was showing to the people of Israel how they were to live with a holy God when they got into the land that he was giving them. But this law had lain under the dust for so long. And because, uh, why had Josiah not done these things? Because the law had been lost, the word of God was lost in the house of God. Why had the king of Israel not done what God had told him to do? Because this is a king who wanted to do what God tells him to do because he sought after the Lord. We've already read that at the beginning of chapter thirty-four. Why didn't he do it? Because he didn't have the word of God. He didn't know specifically what to do. But can you see what I meant about, if you want God, he wants you more? It's Josiah, because he wanted to seek after God, that he got the temple rebuilt and in the course of, and he knocked down all the idols. And in the process of that, they find the word of God. So if you want to know God, he will give you his word. He will make this word alive to you because you want to know him. Josiah wanted to seek after God. He pursued God and God made sure that Josiah knew what God required from him. This is, you know, I mean, it's an amazing thing, but it's not that people that believers don't know what God wants. It's not that we don't know what he wants because he's told us very clearly what he wants, how he wants us to live, what he wants us to do, how he wants us to think. It's not that we, we, we don't know it. It's that we have left the, the word of God. It was been lost in the house of God. It's been lost in the house of God. I mean, I talked a little bit about the application just a minute ago to Josiah and the fact that he could leave his, the family, he could break the family, uh, line of sin. That could be, he, he could choose to walk away from that and, and towards God and God would enable that to be broken, the chains would be broken in his life, uh, off him. And, um, but there's other application, of course, that we can make. And the reason we can make spiritual application to our lives is because that's what God tells us we can do. If, um, in, in the New Testament, in Romans, chapter fifteen, verse four, Romans fifteen, verse four, God will say, through Paul, he will say, sorry, let me get there, Romans fifteen, verse four, for whatever was written in earlier times was written for our instruction, so that through perseverance and the encouragement of the scriptures, we might have hope. So whatever was written in earlier times, whatever was in the Old Testament, is, is for our instruction. And, and so we can take what we read in the Old Testament and we can use it, we can apply it in a spiritual sense to us as believers in the Lord Jesus Christ. And First Corinthians, uh, chapter ten, Paul will write there, that everything that was written down about the Israelites and their coming out of Egypt and going into the land of Israel was written for our instruction. So, um, we can know that there is application for us in the Old Testament, not just the new. And so what else can we make from this? What other application can I take from this? And, you know, there's a couple of steps we can make with it. Do you, as a believer in the Lord Jesus Christ, do you, someone who believes in Jesus, have you got idols in your life? Uh, have you still got your idols? You know, are they still standing? Is, 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 you know, your job or your family or your reputation or your belongings or, um, you, yeah, are any of those things idols? That, what I mean by an idol is anything that takes your focus off God, that's bigger than God, anything that you spend more time on than God. I, I'm not talking about Bible study now, I'm not talking about, um, you know, how much time you, you spend studying the Bible, because studying the Bible is just a means for us to get to know God, to have fellowship relationship with God, because the word of God is, is, is the outpouring of God and the reason that the word of God is alive is because God is alive. And as we read the word, we get to know the living God. And as we get to know the living God, we want to go back to the word and know him better. the living God, we want to go back to the word and know Him better. So it's not the study of the word for itself, but it is, you know, where's your thinking? Where's most of your thinking? What's important to you? What's so important to you that it has become more important than your life with God, your fellowship with God? What's another, is it your health? Is it your marriage? Is it your children? Is it your intellectual education, your position? You know, you remember Paul in Philippians, Philippians, chapter three, Paul says that, you know, he describes himself at the beginning of chapter three, and he had a very good pedigree, and then what he says is, "What whatsoever things were gained to me, I have considered loss compared to the surpassing greatness of knowing Jesus Christ, my Lord." And Paul's testimony, it sounds to our ears, it's like it's so extreme, and we think, well, that was Paul, how could we ever do it? But Paul isn't giving us his testimony as if it's something unusual, he is encouraging us to do the same. He says in chapter three, I mean, it's just the most amazing testimony, in Philippians, chapter three, and I won't read it all, but starting from verse seven, "But whatever things were gained to me, those things I have counted as loss for the sake of Christ. More than that, I count all things to be lost in view of the surpassing value of knowing Christ Jesus my Lord, for whom I have suffered the loss of all things, and count them but rubbish that I might gain Christ, and might be found in Him, not having a righteousness of my own derived from the law, but that which is through faith in Christ, the righteousness which comes from God on the basis of faith, that I might know Him, and the power of His resurrection, and the fellowship of His sufferings, being conformed to His death, in order that I may attain to the resurrection from the dead. Not that I have already obtained it, or already become perfect, but I press on, that I might lay hold of that for which also I was laid hold of by Christ Jesus." And, you know, Paul wasn't, he wasn't counting as lost bad things, he was counting as lost good things, his education, his family, his ancestry, his reputation, everything that he thought of as good, he cast aside compared to the surpassing greatness of knowing Christ Jesus, His Lord. And he pressed on, he says, "I haven't already got there, but I'm pressing on to lay hold of that for which Christ Jesus has already laid hold of me." That's your testimony, that's my testimony, or that can be our testimony, that we, we count everything else as loss, not that it's bad, not that we don't want it all, but that compared to knowing Christ, it becomes rubbish. And the only way that you and I will ever be able to say that is if we get to know this Jesus, if we get to know this God, if we come to this word and we ask, "Lord God, show me who you are, speak to me through the pages of this book, help me to grow in my understanding, my relationship with you," because I want to be able to say with Paul, "Not that I've already obtained it, not that I've already become perfect, but I press on to lay hold of that for which I have already been laid hold of in Christ Jesus." I mean, it's just wonderful, isn't it? And the application, do you have idols standing in your life then tonight, this night? Get rid of them, cut them down. Decide that you will press on, that you will press on to lay hold of everything that Christ has for you. And what about the word of God? Is it on the shelf? How many Bibles you got on your shelf? And how much time do you really spend in them? And how much time do you say, "Look, Lord God, you say you speak through this book, so I need you to speak to me today, I need a specific word, I need a specific answer, I need you to show yourself real to me in the pages of this book." Do it now. Is your body a temple of the Lord? Is the word of God lost in the temple? Have you read the book and you know what it says, but you're still not doing it because you've just forgotten it, or it's not important, or something else has got in the way? Is your body a disused, rundown temple of the Lord? Because your body is a temple of the Lord, First Corinthians, chapter six, verse nine and ten, First Corinthians, six, nine, sorry, nineteen and twenty. "Or do you not know that your body is a temple of the Holy Spirit who is in you, whom you have from God, and that you are not your own, for you have been bought with a price? Therefore glorify God in your body." The word of God is living and active and sharper than any two-edged sword, and it is able to cut through soul and spirit, bone and marrow, and to judge the thoughts and the intentions of the heart, Hebrews four sixteen. This is the word of God, and it is God Himself by His Spirit who is feeding you this word, and who is wanting it to cut through and to enable you to chuck out those things that just shouldn't be in the temple of the Lord, which is your body. What are you reading? What are you listening to every day? What are you watching on the TV? What are you filling your mind with? Because your mind is the computer, and it will determine what you do. What are you filling your mind with? What are you thinking about? What are you watching? What are you listening to? Is it edifying? Is it about the Lord God? Is it building you up? Is it enabling you to seek after God and to run after Him and to lay hold of that for which Christ has already laid hold of you? Is it enabling you to know the power of His resurrection? Is it enabling you to understand the powerful grace of God that is at work towards you? The surpassing great power we saw last week. Have you come up with your own version of the truth? You know, a moral, ethical lifestyle that just looks good and sounds good, and I'm sure it must be good? Have you sold yourself short? Have you trusted in a Jesus who is just a pale shadow of the real Christ? Have you settled for somebody else's version of Jesus? Have you settled to live in the crumbs from the table of someone else's faith? I could cry when I think of how many Christians there are who settle, who settle for the crumbs from someone else's table. God has a feast for you, a feast, and He wants you to partake. Proverbs fourteen, verse twelve says, "There is a way that seems right to man, but its end is death. Don't shortchange yourself." It's the truth that sets us free, and the truth is found in the book, in God's word, John eight thirty-two, "And you will know the truth, and the truth will make you free." Psalm one one nine, verse one oh five, "Your word is a lamp to my feet and a light to my path," John, chapter one, verse one to five. "In Him was life. In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was good. All things came into being through Him, and without Him nothing that came into being came into being. In Him was life, and the life was the light of men." We, as believers, as in Christ Jesus, we represent Christ on this planet, we are His ambassadors, we are to live for His glory, we are to love God with all our hearts, souls, strength and mind, and we are to live as light in the world. Ephesians, chapter five, verse eight, tells me, "I used to be darkness, you used to be darkness, but now you are light in the Lord." Live as children of light. You used to be darkness, live as children of, as earth's children of light. And you don't know how to do that unless God tells you, and He has chosen to tell you through His word. The word of God is the bread of life. Jesus said, "Man does not live by bread alone, but by every word that comes out of the mouth of God." He said, "I am the bread of life. He who comes to me will never hunger, nor will he thirst." He is the water, the living water, that can, that will quench your thirst, your thirst. He is the food that will fill your soul. He is the, He is the way that God has chosen to communicate to us, He is the living word. It's not the Bible or Jesus, it's that Jesus is the word of God, He is the outspoken, the thought of God made flesh, He is the mind of God made real, made human, He is the logos of God, the thought, the thinking of God. God has chosen to communicate to us through His word, His Son Jesus Christ. It is the way that He has chosen to tell us about who He is and about who we are in Christ Jesus. It's the way He has chosen to tell us how we get right with Him and how we live right with Him. And if you are not studying this word, eating this word, then you are starving yourself, you are anorexic, you are deliberately starving yourself of the very stuff of life. We have a church of anorexic believers. We have a massive church, which, where the word of God is lost in the house of God. We have a church full of good works and good missions and good ministries, but we have a church that is very low on the word of God. And if the church doesn't live by the word of God, if the church doesn't eat this word, treasure this word, value this word, then how on earth will they live for God? And if the church can't live for God correctly, if they can't do what God wants them to do and to be what God wants them to be, how on earth do we expect our nation or the world to live as they should live? You know, we're in this time now where, you know, this man, this black man has been killed by white policemen. Do you know, the sixth biggest cause of death among black men in America is to be killed by a white policeman? Now, you know, I mean, it's a tragedy beyond tragedy, racism, you know, of any description in any way is hideous, it's hideous, it's tragic. But honestly, you know, if the church is allowing the murder of millions of babies every year, if we are condoning abortion and going along with it, if we are saying it's okay to do these things, if we are allowing all the stuff that God deliberately says we cannot do, do we really, are we really surprised that we have the situation that we're having today, and the protests and the marches and the rampages? Are we really surprised that people who don't know God are doing this? When the people who do know God don't know what He thinks? How can we expect people to come to a Jesus that the church doesn't witness to? You know, Paul says in, well, First Peter, what the church is, is supposed to be proclaiming the excellence of Him who called us out of darkness into His marvelous light. Is Christ Jesus excellent to you? Is He the most excellent thing in your life? Do you proclaim His excellence? Do you talk about Him and like, "Wow, wow, this is what Jesus did for me, this is what He is doing for me, this is the way that He is filling my life, this is the joy I have because I know Him, this is the peace I have today in this coronavirus trial, this is the way that He is enabling me to stand and to stand firm." Do you know Him well enough to represent Him? Paul says in Romans, Romans, chapter ten, and we'll finish here, Romans, chapter ten. Paul is talking about, he's talking about, he's talking about Israel actually, between chapter nine, ten and eleven, but in the middle of this, in chapter ten, he, his heart is breaking for his people, Israel, for the Jews, and because they haven't believed the gospel. And what he says in this chapter is, well, I'll read from verse eight, but what does it say? "The word is near you, in your mouth and in your heart; that is the word of faith which we are preaching. That if you confess with your mouth Jesus as Lord, and believe in your heart that God raised Him from the dead, you will be saved. For with the heart a person believes, resulting in righteousness; and with the mouth he confesses, resulting in salvation." And as I said, the word heart, I said this before, the word heart in Scripture means your will, the center of your being. "It is with the center of your being that a person believes, resulting in righteousness; and with the mouth that you confess, resulting in salvation. For the Scripture says, 'Whoever believes in Him will not be disappointed; for there is no distinction between Jew and Greek; for the same Lord is Lord of all, abounding in riches for all who call upon Him; for whoever will call on the name of the Lord will be saved.'" How then will they call on Him? In whom they have not believed? How will they believe in Him? Whom they have not heard? And how will they hear without a preacher? And how will they preach unless they are sent? Just as it is written, "How beautiful are the feet of those who bring good news of good things." Paul talking about how will they believe in a Jesus they haven't heard of? And how will they hear of it if someone doesn't tell them? And how will any of this happen if the people who say that they know the Lord Jesus Christ do not live in the way that He wants them to live? How will any of it happen? We have a responsibility, a great responsibility, maybe more so in our day than in any other day. We have an enormous responsibility to know our God and to witness to Him. Look at what it says in verse twelve of Romans, ten. "For there is no distinction between Jew and Greek; for the same Lord is Lord of all, abounding in riches for all who call on Him." Do you know that the Lord Jesus is abounding in riches for you? Do you know those riches? Do you know the riches of peace and life and joy and righteousness? Do you know the riches of assurance of salvation? Do you know the riches of forgiveness? Do you know the riches of being able to repent and never look back? Do you know the riches of the Christ who holds you and keeps you and will never leave or forsake you? Do you know the riches of God in Christ Jesus? We spoke last week, or a couple of weeks, about Ephesians, chapter one, verse, chapter one to three, and those two wonderful prayers in there, that you would know the length and the depth, and the height and the breadth of the love of God that is in Christ Jesus. And that was Paul's prayer for us. And now I want to finish on another prayer that we've looked at already, but it's Colossians, chapter one, verse nine to twelve. This is my prayer for you, and I hope it's your prayer for me, and I hope I see you in the next studies that are going to come up. But more than any of it, I hope that you set your heart to seek after God through His word, and that you really do make it your business to come to Him simply and to ask Him to make Himself known, because I know that He will. Colossians one. "For this reason also, since the day we heard of it, we have not ceased to pray for you and to ask that you may be filled with the knowledge of His will in all spiritual wisdom and understanding, so that you will walk in a manner worthy of the Lord, to please Him in all respects, bearing fruit in every good work, and increasing in the knowledge of God, strengthened with all power according to His glorious might, for the attaining of all steadfastness and patience, joyously giving thanks to the Father, who has qualified us to share in the inheritance of the saints in light." And if I had time, I would go on and read the wonderful description of Jesus that follows this prayer. But Father, this is my prayer for everyone here listening, and for myself, Lord, that we would grow in our knowledge of You, that we would grow in our understanding. that we would grow in our understanding, in all spiritual wisdom and insight, and that you would enable us in that wisdom to walk in a manner worthy of you, pleasing you in all respects, bearing fruit in every good work, persevering, Lord, showing patience, Lord, and so that we are able to steadfastly continue in this life until the day that you call us home. Father God, I know, I know that there is so much more for us, so much more for us to know. And I pray, Lord God, that you would set that desire in our hearts that would not fade away, that you would keep on fanning the flames of that passion, so that we would just keep on and on and on pursuing you, Lord God, until we see you face to face, until we know as we are known. That we would just keep on keeping on, making your word our treasure, deciding that it will be the single most important focus of our life, to know you and to know the Lord Jesus. And I pray, Lord God, for everyone listening, I pray that you would enable us to do that, Lord God, for your glory, because I know that it glorifies you when your people want to know you. So for your glory, Lord, but also for our great and exceeding joy, for we want to know the abounding riches of Christ Jesus, Lord, so that we might better proclaim him, represent him, and talk about him to anyone and everybody that we meet. So, Lord, we want to say, I want to say that I love you. I know that everyone wants to say that they love you. We're so thankful to you, Lord, for your word. And we ask you, Lord, to answer this prayer in the name of the Lord Jesus and for his glory. Amen.